And I'm gonna go live here in a second, so bear with me. Alright, we're live.
Great. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
JM, can I confirm this is recorded?
Yes, this is recorded.
Okay, cuz I know Erica is really disappointed that she can't join us this morning. Definitely wants to hear the three speakers or the three presentations, so we'll have to make sure she accesses that. Looking at the agenda, I guess the first thing I need to do is ask for a motion from my other subcommittee member for approval of the February minutes.
I move to approve the minutes from our February subcommittee meeting as proposed.
And I second that. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
So they're approved. Thank you. So I guess we're gonna go straight to Agenda Item 2, which is hearing from Chaz with the Dublin Entrepreneurial Center. And we're really appreciative that you're here. Thank you so much for taking time this morning and telling us a little bit about DEC. And I guess you can just get started. I don't know if you wanna share a screen or not.
No, I don't. I don't use this platform that much, so I'm not familiar with how to share very well. But I can just give you a good report, I suppose, on diversity and kind of the history of the DEC and those kinds of things. And having Colleen here to help maybe could be great too, since she was integral way back in the beginning, certainly before my time. So but it's a pleasure to be here this morning to share with you and just kind of give you an update as to where the DEC is and some of those numbers that I was asked to prepare for. But going back kind of into the history of the DEC, I got involved back in 2009, right when the DEC first had its grand opening. I had just started my business two months prior. I launched my business in 2009. And the DEC had its grand opening event in the March-April time of that year. And actually, a friend of mine, who actually has become a tenant of the DEC as well, came, sent me a email and said, "Chaz, you ought to go to this event." She knew that I had just started my business and that I was gonna be working with entrepreneurs. And she thought that I should to go to this grand opening. So I did and was privileged to become, I believe, the third tenant of the original DEC location now where Ohio University's campus is in Dublin. Tech Columbus, or now Rev One Ventures, was one of those tenants. And then another business beat me to the punch as far as being the first business tenant there. And then in some conversations with Colleen along the way, she probably regrets it now. But conversations with Colleen, she said, "Hey, you know, we kind of need somebody that might be helpful to us onsite to be able to greet people when they come into the building and they're looking for what the DEC has to offer and maybe even those folks that are looking for space, those startups that are wanting to have a home for their business and recognize the value of what the DEC has to offer." So I was very privileged then to establish a contract with the DEC at that time to kind of manage the onsite location and start coordinating events and programming and, you know, just extra needs that the businesses might need, whether it's internet or phones or whatever. None of those things were in place when I moved my business in there. And Colleen just said, "Be entrepreneurial and go start bringing those services into the DEC." And so we did. And it's grown now to where we are in a new location at 565 Metro Place South, back in that park where there are, you know, what, 12 buildings back here and servicing hundreds of different businesses in this park. And we're privileged to still be operating. And just to give you a little bit of statistics, as of today, we have 105 contracts with businesses that are actually tenants of the facility. So we have 105 contracts. Now, in addition to that, we always have said, probably over the last five or six years, that we have about 150 tenants of the Dublin Entrepreneurial Center. And when we say that, what we mean is is we have many tenants here that have two, three, four businesses that they're operating. But again, we have 105 contracts, which means 105 businesses we actually have a lease with for office space or cubicles or whatever they might be with us. But many of those have a second, third business, and so that's where we get closer to our 150 companies. Over the many years that we've operated, really, the focus has been on creating jobs and helping businesses that are in whatever stage of their development to get started and grow. And that has been very helpful through many of the partnerships that we have had. In the founding of the DEC, certainly that was a major partnership with then Tech Columbus, now Rev One Ventures. But in the creation and growth of the DEC, we had to form a lot of partnerships to make that happen. So whether it was, and it was a lot of professional services and organizations, so law firms and banks and accounting firms and those businesses that could come alongside of the DEC and be able to provide guidance and support to all the businesses that either became visitors of the DEC and just took advantage of our networking and our programming, educational programming that we had to offer, or the businesses that started becoming tenants of the DEC and the services that we could offer them on a weekly basis. So our goal was to bring in these professionals and make them available on a weekly basis to be able to sit down for 30 minutes maybe at a time and just give some needed guidance to those businesses that were struggling in whatever way. And so it just really started out with that. And the attraction to the DEC, of course, at that time back in 2009 is besides Rev One Ventures, you know, the DEC was the newest and only game in town as far as an entrepreneur center offering. We were the first. And as such, we were that shining star up in the northwest corner of central Ohio. And so we drew businesses from all over central Ohio that would come to the DEC. And in our early days, the percentage of non-Dublin residents that were DEC tenants with their businesses was very high because we were the only game that was in town. And of course, now there are multiple entrepreneur centers and there are, you know, upwards of 50 coworking places around town. Unfortunately, some of them probably closing their doors due to COVID. But, you know, that market has changed. And so therefore, over time, the DEC has had to kind of adjust in what we do and how we promote ourselves and things like that. Our mission statement, which I was asked to share, and I can certainly, if anybody wants to visit our website, it's DEC in Dublin, D-E-C in Dublin dot com. And a lot of this type of information is available on the website. But the mission statement of the DEC is to support the creation and development of new technologies, businesses and jobs in a supportive business community that is focused on supporting and growing entrepreneurs and their companies. And so Dana McDaniel, in those early days, I think Colleen would certainly agree that it was Dana's brainchild to get this DEC going. And really, at the beginning, was all focused on education and networking, just to bring people together, allow them just to talk, allow them to share their problems, their successes, their connections, and then throw a little bit of education in there with it. So we would bring people together kind of in a very open networking environment, provide a little bit of snacks, you know, some drinks, and people could just come and hang out. And that worked. People just came and they sat around at tables and they kind of networked and got to know each other. And that was the foundation of the DEC to start building awareness. And then we had the idea of, hey, while people are sitting around, why don't we bring in professionals and throw in a 30-minute educational session here and there during the day? And then that gave those folks an opportunity, not only to network, but actually to move into our open networking space and into a separate conference room and receive some education. And that was really kind of the start of how the DEC got started. But then, year to year after that, sitting in team meetings with the DEC's Economic Development Department, we sat down and we had a different goal each year. And the second goal that came after the opening of the DEC was to establish a green or a sustainable environment and really to target in that second year, bringing in businesses that were in that green and sustainable market, which back in, you know, 2010, that was a big thing. That was a big target in the country, a lot of money from the federal government was being thrown in that direction. And so there were many, many businesses in central Ohio that were moving in the green direction and providing some type of consulting or services or products to help central Ohio go in more of a green direction. And of course, Mayor Coleman, similarly, or a few years before that, brought out his green, five-year green memo. And that really was the launch of, you know, kind of central Ohio being kind of a 50th, 40th in the country, somewhere in there, recognized as green to really, in a very, very short period of time, we were in the top 20 in the region, I mean, in the country for being recognized to be a sustainable green city. And certainly Dublin then played a key role in that and targeting some business. So I think in our second year, we attracted over 20 businesses in that green sector. And many of, I shouldn't say many, some of those businesses, we still have at the DEC today or some offshoot of those businesses. The third year, our target was international. And that's really, I think, where we started to get into that diversity area because the third year focus, Dana said, "Hey, okay, we've done well." And kind of establishing the DEC, the second year, we moved on to green and sustainable. The third year, let's go after international. Let's start targeting businesses that are, that have their founders, that are maybe from foreign countries, companies that are doing a lot of business with overseas, that kind of thing. And let's see how we can bolster the DEC in a different way. And so we started intentionally trying to attract, just like we did with green businesses, we started intentionally trying to attract businesses that were, where the founders were from China. They were from Japan. They were from other countries to bring in more diversity from a business perspective and just be able to show businesses how you can do business on an international basis and whether that's exporting or importing or whatever. And that's where that started to grow. And as we all know, you know, I think where a lot of the diversity has come from in Dublin, and I grew up in Upper Arlington and have lived now in Dublin for over 30 years, but there's no question that where a lot of that diversity started to come from was the, you know, Dublin City School System and reacting, I'm sure, in some degree to Honda, Honda's presence and starting to be able to provide a great job in teaching other languages and whatnot in the school system and really became a magnet for others to be able to come and assimilate into a great community. And I think the school system really was a catalyst for that. And then the DEC kind of jumped on that too. And so the DEC has kind of, over time, mimicked the population of Dublin cuz I know that Dublin has a very high percentage of population, you know, in the Asian community, Japanese, Indian, Chinese, and we have a good percent of Japanese, Indian and Chinese businesses at the DEC. I would say Indian would be number one, Chinese maybe is number two, and then Japanese businesses that we have. And those numbers are currently minority-owned businesses. As of today, we have 43. So of the 105 companies at the DEC, 43 are considered minority businesses. 26 of those businesses are female-owned. So approximately 25% of the businesses, female-owned, and close to 50% of the businesses are minority. So, and that goes back there again to that initial attraction. We never really intentionally had a year or a time where we said, "Hey, we're gonna target female-owned businesses." But we certainly had a lot of sponsors and collaborators and other supporting folks that were related to the DEC that were females. And I think that that helped to bring and attract more female-owned businesses into the DEC because we had so many female leaders that were from our collaborator and sponsor organizations that were there supporting those businesses. And so I think the female startup businesses felt comfortable coming into the DEC and being able to, you know, build relationship with other female leaders. And I think that that's very important, you know, when trying to bring people and attract people and continue to bring them back along the way. So I think, and I would be pretty comfortable in saying this, that there's no question that the continued attraction, especially for minority-owned businesses to the DEC is just when we bring in potential new businesses that we're wanting to bring into the DEC, we'd like to invite them to networking and programming events if they haven't been to one yet. And one of our favorite internal networking events is called Popcorn Friday, which is an event we do once a month. Right now, it's on the first Friday of every month. And we have, from 2:30 to 4 o'clock on the first Friday afternoon, we provide food that's made by an individual here at the DEC, makes it fresh for us. And also, we have beer and wine and other things. And it's an opportunity for our tenants to come and just network with each other. It's not open to the public, so it's just a way for them to get to know each other. And a lot of times, if I've got a tenant or a business that we really want to attract to the DEC, I'll invite them to a Popcorn Friday. And the great thing about that is that really shows our diversity because we get a nice mix. Oftentimes, between 30 and 50 of our tenants will show up to a Popcorn Friday. And it really shows the mix of different types of businesses as well as the different, you know, the diversity that we have within the DEC. And then helping to strike up those conversations, introducing folks to other people. And it's not uncommon for me to hear on a monthly basis that one of our tenants leaves that type of internal networking event and they'll come to me and say, "Hey, you know what? I've been here at the DEC for two years and just met this other tenant that's been here for one or two or more years. Didn't know that this is exactly what they did and we're forming a partnership on going after a piece of business or whatever." And so I think when the foreign types of minority types of folks come in to look at being a part of the DEC and they feel comfortable seeing a good number of other minority business, female-owned businesses, that type of thing, I think that makes them feel comfortable coming into the DEC environment, that there are others there that they can collaborate with, you know, potentially do business with, and certainly feel comfortable with the environment that we've created.
Great. First, thank you so much. You guys are really on the cusp of the wave of entrepreneurial centers and coworking. I couldn't recollect the phrase, but you said the 50 coworking. I mean, you were describing something that now is everywhere. It's pretty impressive. I did not know really any of what you just shared, so I personally appreciate it. I know Isav knows more about DEC, but Erica, again, when she has a chance to watch it, I think will really appreciate what you've shared. Do you mind if we ask you some questions?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Not a problem at all.
So one thing I'm wondering, I did not know, like, there's this idea of goal-setting or identifying a focus each year. That certainly is consistent, I think, with, you know, the part of why we're interested in DEC is exploring that opportunity of like, would there be a focus with DEC or some similar organization where there would be an effort to recruit businesses in, you know, not additional minority businesses, primarily black and Latino, I think, but there could be other folks. How do you guys decide your focus? Is that related to your funding? Because that's my other question, is just trying to understand how you guys stay afloat financially.
Well, Colleen might be able to better explain the financial support from the city of Dublin from the early days. One thing I left out is the DEC is independent. It's not a city-owned or city oversight, you know, facility. You know, I was a contractor from the very beginning. The DEC has always been in a privately-owned facility. The DEC tenants have always paid that privately-owned facility for the space that they have. However, if it wasn't for, obviously, the city of Dublin, Dana, Colleen, the Economic Development Team, City Council, in providing, you know, support dollars, the DEC wouldn't exist. There's no question about that. And a lot of that is support, you know, in common areas of the DEC, conference rooms, internet, you know, a lot of those resources and facilities that a small business would benefit by being in this type of facility. So the real benefit of a business coming into the DEC environment is that they move into a, you know, a space, whether it's a cubicle or an office. They move into a space where the rate that they're paying for the space, their own space, is pretty competitive, okay? But what they're not having to pay for is all the common areas. So they're not having to pay for conference rooms. They're not having to pay for the lobbies and all those kind of things that usually, when you're moving into your own, you know, place in a building, okay, and securing your own lease, that's a piece of your lease, is having to pay for all that common space in addition. And so we're not charging them for conference rooms. We're not charging for Wi-Fi. We're not charging printing, phones, those kind of things. And those are all services that sponsors are helping us to provide. And so when somebody's weighing the difference between going someplace else or coming to the DEC, they not only see all of those great resources that come along, you know, with that, but then they see the community. And that's the first thing that we're always selling is the community. Over 60% of our tenants do business with at least one other tenant. That's staggering, okay? That means six out of 10 tenants are doing business with another tenant at the DEC, okay? Somebody's providing them with some type of service, whether it's IT to help them with their computers or it's programming or it's marketing or whatever it might be. So we truly have created a community, and that's what we sell first. The space has always been a secondary. Now, during COVID, we've had a little dip in, you know, open spaces, so we've put a little more focus on trying to sell spaces, okay, just because of, you know, dollars and making budget. But really, for most of the years we've been in existence, we haven't had to do that. The DEC has really survived on its own by just word of mouth and attraction and some marketing that we've done to be able to promote it. But really, a lot of the marketing was just having events, networking, you know, those kinds of things.
And just, I know Colleen probably has more to add, but related to that is the services, sort of the professional services you referred to that are offered, especially in the networking venue, is that, who's doing that? Are they doing that because they're looking for, you know, additional clients eventually? Are they in the DEC? Are they funded through sponsorship? How does that work? Or is it all of the above?
Yeah, great question. We've never targeted professionals to be tenants of the DEC. So we've had a few lawyers over the years, but they've been startups. So they've been brand-new, out of college, just startup, and they don't stay long. So our goal has never been to have professionals, insurance agents, you know, accountants, whatever, as tenants of the DEC. That's never been our goal, our target. So to be able to bring those folks alongside, which all of those are integral parts of having a successful business, is those kinds of relationships, to have those, we've always had them as sponsors or collaborators. We certainly want to target them as sponsors first because in sponsoring, they're providing, maybe they're providing dollars and those dollars help us with our networking events or our programming or whatever we might, those things that we have to pay for in addition to, you know, over and above the sponsorships that we get from the city. Others that aren't sponsors, where we still need to fill in those gaps, are collaborators. And they just come alongside us, and there again, they're providing free time to come in and provide consulting, coming in and providing educational programming, those kind of things. So they're all paying back, paying forward, however you want to look. Their certain goal certainly is to become more well-known, hopefully attract some business to them. And I think by and large, most of our sponsors have seen business and, you know, from those relationships, some better than others. And I think a lot of that has to do with just how well they market themselves, how well they take those relationships to the next level to create opportunities for them. But we help to promote them and certainly put them in front of the business community so that they can prosper from that. But those relationships have been critical in making sure that we're offering those types of services. And then as other entrepreneur centers started to open and collaborate, other coworking places started with, they all mimicked what we were doing. So they all started doing programming. They all started doing networking. They all started doing, you know, those things over time. So like I said, we've had to pivot somewhat into the years because, you know, it went from us being the only ones providing that type of programming to now, you know, you've got 50 organizations in central Ohio that are providing education and networking events and things like that. So we have to keep focusing on what our main distinguishing factor is, and that is a community of businesses. And that's where I think we've been so great at attracting especially minority businesses.
Hey, Chaz. It's Isav. Good to see you again.
See you too.
I always knew, obviously, that the DEC had a healthy number of minority tenants. I did not realize that it was that high in terms of percentage. I'm very much impressed. And thank you for what you've been able to do. Obviously, it sounds like we're doing great with the Indians, the Chinese and the Japanese, the, I think what I would consider a very visible minority in Dublin. And certainly, I'm happy to see that. But as far as, you know, being aspirational with what we want to achieve, I want to, I guess, ask what Bridget mentioned a little bit. You know, what do you think might be an opportunity that we might have with outreach to the blacks or the Latino community? Because I think Dublin as a whole, even though we do great with minority overall, struggle with that subset. At least that's the, I guess, impression that I have. What do you see at DEC?
Well, we certainly have a number of African-American, black-owned businesses. The majority of those happen to be female, okay? So the majority of the black-owned businesses that we have at the DEC are female businesses. You know, in asking them what has attracted them to the DEC, it's a number of things. And none of the black-owned businesses that we have here at the DEC, to my knowledge, live in Dublin, okay? That's a factor right there. So there again, where the Asian tends, you know, that's because Dublin, what, has a pretty 20% Asian population? You know, so that is an easy correlation. I don't believe any of our black-owned businesses are Dublin residents. So what they've been attracted to is there again, the community, the security. The DEC is very secure because we happen to be, you know, within a data center also. So we have very high level of security at the DEC as far as digital cameras and, you know, passes and everything like that, badges to be able to get through the facility. And those female businesses, I think, feel safe in that type of an environment. And I think they were attracted to us there again, due to the programming that we had. They happened to attend a programming event. They saw, wow, I got a chance maybe for my business to be in Dublin for all the positives, you know, outside of the DEC that Dublin has to offer. How we can increase that, I'd love to talk with anybody to see how we might be able to do better, you know, in that area as well because I'd like to see us grow in that area. But we have. So we've gone from, you know, actually, maybe five years ago, we maybe averaged one or two black-owned businesses in the DEC. I think of the 43 minority and 26 women, I think that's closer, you know, to, you know, 12 to 15 now up in that area. So it's grown, and I can't tell you that it's been any particular target, except for the fact that... And I can't tell you that it's been any particular target, except for the fact that, you know, when we're looking for businesses, when somebody comes to the door and says, hey, we'd like to maybe become a tenant of the deck. And some of them, I wouldn't be too encouraging to be tenants. Certainly, any black-owned business or minority-owned business, we have been very accommodating, more accommodating too, I would say, in becoming a tenant of the deck. So, because we don't accept everybody. And there again, that gets back to the fact that we're not just about space. We don't accept everybody that comes in the door that wants to become a tenant of the deck. They have to, you know, meet certain qualifications and, you know, there again, we weren't targeting professionals and those kinds of things. But when it comes to minority and black-owned businesses and Latino, we certainly have gone overboard to try to attract those businesses and be more of an open door. Probably the weakest is definitely Latino. We maybe have one or two and that's it in that category.
Okay, thank you.
I was writing notes.
I would think a big help in attracting as well is our part, probably our biggest one is our partnership with Ohio Small Business Development Centers is probably our best in helping us in that regard. Not as much Rev One, our strong partnership with them, but probably Ohio Small Business Development Centers. Because SBDC being headquartered more or less at Columbus State Community College and a lot of their programming and relationships with the business community, they have a very high minority and female connection with the business community. And because of our connection, strong connection with them, I think that's been a bit of a pipeline for us. And probably more of our, of those businesses that come our direction have somehow been involved with SBDC as well. So that's, that I would say probably giving them the biggest star in helping us in that category.
I know we have a full agenda. I just, if anybody else wanted to add anything or point anything out, ask a question. Chaz, thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate the info. And I'm very impressed with what you guys have accomplished and all your efforts and how forward-thinking you were. You gotta, what's the next round? You know, you gotta get ahead of the, whatever the next co-working curve is. I don't know what that might be.
Well, it's always keeping up with Dublin and Colleen and Dana. I'll tell you, they're always doing something new. They're always so forward-thinking in what they're doing. And so it's always trying to keep up with, keep up with them. But, but yeah, it's just consistently looking at what the community needs and how we can be, how we can be different. And so I think a lot of it right now is responding to, just very quickly, responding to folks and whether or not, you know, the virtual thing or coming back to live events, whether that, is that going to hold? You know, you still have people that are fearful and coming back to small, you know, small gatherings where people are close together and that kind of thing. And we are so blessed to have a startup company that came here, that Chris Borha and his company. And he started out just as a multi-level marketing guy. And then he evolved into become a better networker, so teaching people how to network. And now he started an organization called Borha Virtual, which he just took a brand-new office space that he turned into a studio. And his business is going gangbusters as far as being able to provide more of a realistic, okay? And more of a, it gives you the feel of being actually at an event when you're still virtual, okay? And so it's taking a very high level of technology and bringing that. I know the city of Dublin has used their platform. And so it's being, looking at how is, how is our community going to respond to current, you know, or future networking, current, future programming events? And he's one of the answers to that. So we're very blessed to have a tenant like that who's evolved along the way and is growing with, started with one person and now he's six and has grown to two offices, including a studio that's, that's offering these types of services. So we're excited for that kind of opportunity. But thank you so much for allowing me to come and share. At any time I can, you know, help you with anything or anything you can feed me. There again, whatever you come up with to draw more, you know, folks in those categories, please let me know because I'd love to hear that information as well, so.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Take care. Bye-bye.
Great. So item number, that was very helpful, JM. Thank you. And Esau, I don't know if you, for the record, want to say anything or add anything at this point? Or should we just move to agenda item, the next one?
I think in the interest of time, I would rather hear from our guests.
Right, okay. So I guess this is you, JM, Dublin Mobility Study Presentation.
I'm sorry, y'all. Can you hear me okay and see my screen? My, my program froze for a second and I almost had a meltdown, but we're okay. So let's continue on to mobility. We're going to provide you a Dublin Mobility Update. I'm joined by Ryan McManus of Share and we'll be tackling this presentation together. To give you an outline, we're going to cover the background of the mobility study, talk about the five focus areas that we're looking at for investment, and then welcome some feedback and discussion at the end. And feel free, if you have a, you know, question along the way, I'm happy to answer it. So, you know, remember that when we're going through this presentation. The Dublin Mobility Study is the city's plan for an innovative transportation network that responds to the evolving needs of the community. That could be aging in place, as we've discussed, it could be people with disabilities, it could be supporting the workforce. We started this study back in 2017 with a big kickoff we had at the Dublin Community Recreation Center. We had a pretty sizable workshop with different stakeholders in Dublin and throughout the region to provide some feedback and gather data to help us go to phase two, which is taking all that data, analyzing it, and then going to phase three, which was looking at pilots implementing the program in the city. We did create a vision as well as key objectives as part of this effort. And that helped us to take those pilots and make sure that they're responding to the community needs in phase four and making them more permanent programs. We are about to launch phase five, the mobility study. And that's going to be focused on three of the five areas, which would be mobility hubs, bike loops and shared micro-mobility, which is a fancy way of saying bike share and rental scooters. The key objectives for this study are to first and foremost, support economic development. We want to promote equitable access to mobility. And we also want to expand multimodal options. And we think if we get more people active and out of their cars, we can improve public health, whether it be having more active individuals or cleaner air from less pollution from people driving by themselves. The last part is talking about preserving environments by focusing future growth. That speaks to where there are opportunities to redevelop in the city. We want to redevelop them in walkable, mixed-use environments that are friendly to transit and other modes of transportation. So Bridge Park in the Bridge District is a good example of taking a former strip mall and turning it into a mixed-use environment that is friendly to transit and also walkable from many different modes of transportation. The strategic mobility priority areas are where the fun begins with the implementation of the Dublin Mobility Study. We have micro-transit, which is the shuttle, shuttles and circulators that we've deployed in the community. And we call that service the Dublin Connector. And it serves the shuttle service for both those aging in place, those with disabilities and for the workforce. We're looking at shared micro-mobility, which again is bike share and rentable scooters. We're looking at concepts for mobility hubs and we'll dive into more what that means. But those are opportunities in the city to co-locate different modes of transportation and have transfer points for people to choose between shuttles, bikes or walking, what have you. The last area is complete and smart streets. And that's making sure that, excuse me, that's making sure that our public roadways and streets are accessible to everybody regardless of age or ability. And we also want to incorporate smart components into our infrastructure, whether it be for data gathering or for safety measures. The goal at the end of the day is to create a mobility ecosystem. And this is a way to look at the priority areas and see how they interact visually with each other. You can see that Coda micro-transit feed into each other, but they ultimately rely on mobility hubs to connect to the rest of the areas of mobility. And so mobility hubs will be a strong focus moving forward where we see opportunities to expand these mobility options. So I'm going to go, I'm going to go through each area very briefly. I'll probably focus a little bit more on micro-transit because we have the most data and the most impact in that respect. But I want to give you an idea of what we have planned for the future as well. So we'll start off with the Dublin Connector, which is our micro-transit service. The focus of this is to provide mobility independence for those aging in place and those with disabilities. And that's important when we think about quality of life, but also safety in our community. And then the service provides the first and last mile connection for the workforce. So you'll have people that are commuting to Dublin for jobs. They'll take the Coda service from throughout central Ohio and they'll be taken to different bus stops in and around Dublin. This shuttle service will then connect them to the last mile to get to their Dublin employer. I'm going to let Ryan talk about this slide.
Thanks, JM. And I appreciate everyone allowing me to come here and talk a little bit about what mobility can do for equitable access. And so, you know, one of the underlying benefits of this specific mobility program is it's going to the people who are most likely to need it. We don't track race demographics in our database, but I was able to kind of get an anecdotal report from my team. And at least 90% of our ridership for the Dublin workforce program is some, a minority of some type. And they're 100% economically disadvantaged. And, you know, equitable access gets thrown around a lot, but what I think it really means for this mobility program is giving it to the people that need it the most specifically versus it just being open and available to anyone, where it gets mediocre use in a lot of cases, right? Take the resources that you have and give it to those who have the greatest need. The program has been designed so that we're tapping into whatever available resources we have for public transit. And so we're tapping into all of the available public transit lines to bring people as close as possible to the city of Dublin at the lowest cost possible. But then there's a gap and we're filling that gap to get people to the employer destination. And the network effect comes in by having the businesses be partners with us. And so we get employers of all types. The employers who are participating the most today are more of a blue-collar type of workforce. We were starting to get interest and participation from the white-collar types of businesses like Cardinal Health. And then COVID happened. I do expect them to come back and start participating more. But the ridership today are individuals that might be going to a Meyer store or they're working at one of the hotels. They're traveling more than 32 miles round trip. They don't have availability of their own vehicle, but they haven't necessarily heard about this service and they need to have the education for how to use it. And it's akin to learning how to drive a car or ride a bike, right? You have to be taught how to use mobility. Our program is not Uber because that's unsustainable in two ways. It's not, it's not a great service for the individual and it can be very expensive. And our model is bring the service to individuals through an organization and have them plan it in advance. And so we have to teach them how to do it. But what we're getting is very high ridership and very high participation. And so this is 30 to 40 trips per month that we're having from the individuals that are going to and from work. So they're very much depending on it and relying on it. And then it's also very important that we have sustainable operations. And when I say sustainable, I mean two things. I mean environmentally sustainable and economically sustainable. And from an economically sustainable perspective, what we're trying to do is stack the funding sources so that it's not all on the city of Dublin and taxpayers. That's provided an initial subsidy. We've got 5310 grants that have helped provide some additional funding sources. We're going after different types of grant programs, like AARP has a grant. There's also Medicaid and Medicare funding for transportation that could be stacked into this. We would like to see the employers picking up part of this. And this qualifies as a pre-tax benefit. And so if the employers are participating, they can pull up to $270 directly out of somebody's payroll pre-tax. And so by putting all of these things together, we're going to have an option for somebody that's living outside of Dublin and working in Dublin. And that is very like, they are very likely to have some type of economic need. You can look at the chart on the right. If somebody's commuting 32 miles round trip a day, there's, and they're earning $15 an hour, they're spending over 30% of their annual income just to get to and from work. By allowing them to ride the bus and have this last mile connection, you're taking one of their largest expenses, giving them that economic buying power. It's like a, it's like a raise for them by making this available to them. But we have to educate them on how to use it. We have to get the businesses to participate. And the last thing that I think is, is an interesting thing to consider, this is a future potential. It's implementing a commuter benefits ordinance in the city. And this is actually a mandate where you start requiring that the employers make it easy for somebody to pay for a bus pass pre-tax. This is only done in six or seven cities around the country right now. It's very new and novel. And participation is fairly easy, but you put it into the welcome packet and you say, these are your options for how to get to work. You can ride the bus. Here's how you can buy a bus pass. You can take the Dublin Connector. Here's how you can take the Dublin Connector. And then they're compliant. But by introducing this to new employees over about a five-year period, you could, you could basically have full awareness amongst the entire workforce as people change jobs every five years. And getting somebody at that point of decision-making for how am I going to get there is much easier than trying to get somebody to change their behavior. The beauty of all of this is that it's getting employers to take, to participate in the commute in a way they've never done before. But they do it for healthcare, so why shouldn't they do it for, for the commute?
Before I move on, do you have any questions for Ryan in particular? Or would you like me to continue with the presentation and questions later?
I'd like to ask, just for clarification, so are currently the writers, are writers paying something to use the service at all?
No, they have to cover their own Coda bus fare, but they don't pay for the connector.
Okay. And the idea of the commuter benefits ordinance, as an employer in Dublin, you know, we would love to share with our employees in a welcome packet this information. I mean, to me, it's a given. You want to help your employees get here, get to work on time and get home at a reasonable time. So I guess I'm trying to understand what the commuter benefits ordinance is. And then you said, it seemed like it was, you were suggesting it's a hard thing for some employers to adopt just sharing the information. So can you clarify that a little bit?
Yeah, it's still very new for employers. And so in an, in an organization, there typically isn't somebody that owns the commute. And so it's first finding somebody who can own it inside of that organization and be the one to take the information we have and get it to the employees. We've worked very closely with Rachel Ray. We've made great progress with a lot of the employers, but there's still a lot to do. That's why I say we're still in the education phase of all of this.
And there's many different, there's a few different flavors of community benefits ordinances. Some can just be, you know, do you do a mapping analysis of your commute or, you know, your commuters? And maybe that will lead to other conversations about people carpooling, vanpooling or taking the bus and in the shuttle. And it could be more of a carrot kind of approach or more of a stick approach depending on what the community has an appetite for, the business community and what the city feels comfortable supporting. So I think we can So I think we can provide a few examples of what shares provided. And then we have a consulting, a mobility consultant called Nelson Nygaard. They have both provided one pagers that I can share with both of you after this meeting.
Just so that I can put some kind of, and I scale in my idea of what this is at the moment. How many employers are participating about how many riders are taking total of how many rides?
I think it's something around 10 or 12 individuals that are taking about 30 rides on average per person, per month. And those employees, those riders are probably coming from five employers. There's, I would say about 15 employers that actively share this information with their employees. And it'll ebb and flow where we'll have somebody join for a little bit. And then not ride for a variety of reasons. Sometimes they come back. So we, we want to have as many employers with, that have the information so that we can catch the employees that might need it.
And Esa, I have some numbers and a few slides coming up, but that's more of the program as a whole, not necessarily looking at the workforce.
Thank you.
Why don't I continue on with this section? And then if we have any questions after that, we'll answer them before we move on to the next priority area. This is a heat map of where the top destinations are for the shuttle service. And this combines the workforce and the aging in place disabilities services. You'll see Walmart and AC Marriott and Kroger round up the top three destinations in our community. And I put these orange circles and to show you where there's a clustering of destinations occurring in our community. So this can help inform us on future investments to help people get to and from these clusters. And maybe they can provide other opportunities down the road. But I think it is interesting to look at the cluster happening around Sawmill to historic Dublin and Bridge Street District in general. We have Tuttle Mall as an important transfer point for the workforce on line 21. But we also have other retail amenities in that area. And then the Avery near field, I think Avery Square where Giant Eagle and Kroger is located. That is a top destination for retail and grocery destinations. We did do some surveying, or I should say Lindsay and our communications public information division did some surveying on, particularly for the aging in place and people disability side, what are the top desired locations? So if people aren't inclined to use the service, where would they be most likely to go? And we see that the grocery store and restaurants and pharmacy have the highest markings, but the rest of them are just as valid in terms of destinations. In the rec center, movie theaters, maybe not now, but hopefully soon. And other doctor appointments are very important as well as the food pantry. And volunteer opportunities, you know, I think it's very important, particularly for aging in place, that that sense of connection to the community is very important for, for mental health in general. So I think it's great that we can provide these opportunities to have an active lifestyle for those living in our community. It was interesting that 86% of respondents have a smartphone or use apps. That is a very interesting number. It's higher than I thought. I will say in my own personal experience, my grandparents both have smartphones. Maybe it isn't as far-fetched as I thought it was, but it is. And, you know, it is interesting to know, but we do provide call-in services in addition to requesting a ride through the app. So we try to provide as much accommodation as possible for those interested in riding. Esa, you might, you may enjoy this page a lot. This is tech, it's looking at the metrics, not all of them, but I did select some of the more interesting ones. We have been able to get over 10,000 miles off the road of people who are commuting by themselves. So we think that's a positive in terms of air quality, but also congestion on the roadways. We do have about 196 unique riders and those are for workforce and for aging in place combined. We service 120 different destinations and participating employers in the community. We operate about almost eight hours a week on average. We serve a number, almost a, over a dozen senior facilities. We diverted 8,400 pounds of CO2 from polluting our airways in Dublin. So I think that is also an interesting, an interesting data point. We've provided over 8,200 rides. We're looking at how this can impact parking because that's important as we think about the changing needs of parking and how many people are working in office buildings these days. And we're looking at the average miles per ride and the cost per ride. And I would like you to keep in mind that this is from the very beginning, we're doing pilots. So this data encompasses a lot of the program. And in the beginning, we weren't having, we didn't have the most efficient numbers, but it's been improving steadily even with COVID. So I think it's important to call out. I want to share the next steps as we look at the microtransit service. The first two have green asterisk marks and those are already in progress. So we are, we did sign a lease with Share to lease out a city vehicle that has its ADA accessible to wheelchair ramp. And that will be used in service. That's great for branding. So we're, we're doing some vehicle wraps or decals that will be hopefully, will help it become more visible in the community, which I think is good for break raising awareness, but also lowers the operating costs. So we can do a lot more with the money that we have allocated for mobility. We are working with Columbus and Morpsy on the link us Northwest Corridor, which goes from Broad Street all the way to Bridge Park in Dublin along the Old Thames River Road Corridor. So we're working with our other communities to make sure that as they look at high capacity transit from Broad Street to Bethel Road, that we can begin thinking about how we can connect that to Dublin in the Bridge Street District. They're looking at bus rapid transit currently as a system to be deployed from Columbus to Dublin. So that's interesting to see how that takes shape and how we can be supportive of it along the corridor. We will continue to advocate for Coda services. We'll look at different levels of subsidies and also grants as Ryan mentioned. The more diversity of funding we have, we think the better the program will be. We're looking at partners and senior care facilities as well as businesses. And we're looking at adopting different parking management policies, which will help, I think, support this system. We will continue to refine the KPIs. We did a great job with, I think, laying out the initial KPIs, but we want to continue to refine them and make sure we're, we're meeting the needs of the community and as we're tracking this data. I think the last option was something that was, you know, we do, with each phase that I mentioned, we do a report. So when the phase four report is finishing up, I can share that with you all. But it provides next steps like this and it's always been a long-term goal to have a truly on-demand service. And Ryan has worked very hard with his team to narrow that window of pre-scheduling. So I think it's exciting to see that continue to mature, advance in our community. So if there's any questions on the microtransit, we'd love to answer them now that we haven't answered yet.
Sorry. So I'm JM's cohort and partner in crime in this, in this endeavor. JM, since it sounds like if people are, especially the workforce shuttle, if they're coming from outside the community, is Morpsy or anyone helping us promote the program to get to potential riders?
That's a great question. We do have support from Morpsy and we are a part of a regional cohort of other communities that have microtransit. So we regularly talk to Grove City, Westerville, Columbus on how they're doing with success, maybe shortcomings. And when we're working with Morpsy, I'm promoting the service, but also as part of the regional mobility plan that they're working on. So we're hoping that there's opportunities to promote that with the regional mobility plan that's underway and look for other opportunities to raise awareness.
Okay, thanks. Sorry.
The cost per ride of $24 and some, obviously I, I see that as a, you know, a goal that go, go to bring it down, I imagine. Is there a level where it becomes economically sustainable? As Ryan put it, is there a number that we know already or that's just a moving target still?
I think it's a, it's a moving target and I'll let Ryan add to this. For us, it's being able to shift the burden of some of the transportation costs off of the individual and into, and for the community to take on. So a good example of this would be, we've heard anecdotally that some commuters that were taking Coda would spend $200 to $400 a month on Uber and Lyft to make that final connection. And more often than not, these could be workers that are maybe not the most high-paying individuals in our community. Maybe don't have the highest skills in our community. So the burden, I think, is inflated even more when you think about that context. So we think it's a win if we can shift that burden. And like Ryan said, it's almost like giving these individuals a raise if they have more disposable income at the end of the day because of the program. It's also important for Dublin to maintain a talent pool and be competitive. So if we can, you know, funnel in individuals from all over the region, that's a win for Dublin. And that goes into supporting our income tax as well at the end of the day. So we like to continue to lower that number, but we don't exactly have a number that we're shooting for. For us, it's about having more workforce participation. So if we have 70,000 workers, give or take in Dublin, if we can shift 1% to using the shuttle service or mode shifting to different, to not driving by themselves, we think that's a success for the program. So that would be about 700 individuals a day that would use the service. We're not quite there yet, but we're, that's the big, that's the big goal for us.
Thank you.
But I would, I would personally like to drive that number down if that makes everyone feel better. It's just
Essential.
It's, yeah, it's essential. And I think it really gets to what Ryan said, you know, with the aging in place side, it's, it's a knockout of the park. It's doing very well. We're getting increasing ridership, great feedback on how it's helping quality of life. With the workforce side, we are struggling, not only because COVID and people on office workers not back at the job, but it's difficult to find that champion in organizations that believe in the value of this program and want to share it with either the C-suite or the HR department. So we'd love recommendations and ideas along the way, but just to be completely honest, it's, it's been an uphill struggle with that. All right. Well, in the interest of time, we'll keep on moving and we can answer any questions again. The next area I want to talk about is Bike Share, which is Share Micro Mobility. We are working on two different systems to implement in Dublin. The first is called Trip. It is a startup out of Columbus and it has, it features e-bikes, which are electric bikes that have pedal assist in them. So that's very helpful if you're going up hills or if you have people who maybe don't want to put as much effort and sweat into it, which would be someone like me, to have a very leisurely ride around the city. So I think they're a really cool product. They're proposing a public-private partnership with the city. So we're still working out those details to see what that looks like finally, but we're hoping to launch next year in 2022. So possibly with a fleet between 50 to 100 bikes throughout the city. And they have geo-fencing technology, so we could help with corralling where we want these bikes to be and where we want them to be parked since they don't have a dock. So we're working out those details as well to make sure that we have good curb management and they're not just left in areas that we don't want them to be left. The second system is the Kogo Bike Share, which you may be familiar with. It is centered in Columbus, but it has expanded to Cranview Heights and Bexley and Upper Arlington. A couple of years ago, there was a push to expand that system into those suburban communities. And they were successful with some money through Morpsy, the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. So we currently have a partnership with Ohio State. We have a studio of students that have been working on proposed locations for the stations as well as funding resources. And they are going to be coming out with that recommendation as their final project in the coming weeks. We did do a checking with them, so we're very excited. It looks like if we can, once the studio is finished up, we'll have all the pieces for the application for the federal money. So they're helping us a lot with the public input in the station locations. We hope to have everything finalized by this year to apply for the next round of grants in 2022. And hopefully have been awarded money for implementation in 2023. We are partnering with Columbus, Upper Arlington, Hilliard and the Metro Park System to expand Kogo in a northwesternly fashion to encompass all these communities. So these would be docked and we find it to be an exciting opportunity and hopefully we can get the money and implement this system. As we are talking about businesses, I wanted to share with you all some considerations that businesses could do to help with encouraging more of a biking culture in Dublin. It's very helpful if plenty of employers have bike parking or facilities for bikes at their site or at their office. These can be bike storage facilities. So this is a good picture of what that could look like at a business. There can be onsite locker rooms and showers for those who do commute by bike, but want to be presentable for the workplace once they're done commuting. And then if there's any interest in the future for a Bike Share station, we'd like to work with those companies. So I think that's something to think about as we're looking to expand the biking culture in Dublin. For the next steps, we're going to coordinate the launch of Trip Bike, hopefully next year. Bird Scooter has approached us and we are working with them to launch in Dublin. There are some issues that we need to address, such as the code does not allow these scooters on our shared use paths and trails. So we need to adjust the code if we want to launch these bird scooters in Dublin. So it's a really good learning opportunity, not only for Dublin, but other communities in central Ohio that may, may need to make adjustments to their code, allow for these other modes of transportation. And we are gonna, like I said, we're gonna work on expanding Kogo and then the code revisions we'll tackle as well. Do y'all have any questions on the Bike Share part of things?
Just quickly, do you guys view the, the bike focus? I totally appreciate JM, as you might know, the, the physical benefits for health and obviously the environmental benefits. Do you guys view the bike and/or the scooter program as an integral part of, you know, Dublin Connector in any way? Or really it's, it's a separate complementary thing?
They will have, they will be able to interact with the mobility hubs. So as we build out that system, it'll become more apparent how the ecosystem is taking shape with mobility. So I think they can be supported by themselves, but they'll be augmented once we get those mobility hubs up and running. All right. Well, I'll move on. Mobility hubs, very timely. So let's talk about it. This is an example of a mobility hub sketch that's in, out of Minneapolis. You can see that there is a few different components, whether it be bicycles, scooters and then a transit stop. The biggest takeaway from ability hubs for us is to provide a space to co-locate different modes of transportation, so whether it be Bike Share or a transit stop and so on, and then serve as a transfer point for very easy transfer between these different modes. We do have a typology or a tier system for our mobility hubs to understand what we want to focus on. The first tier is looking at downtown and the park and ride. So as you can see, the potential locations would be the parking, the parking garage at the Dublin Library, Bridge Park, most likely North Market. That's a great congregation for the community and it really makes a lot of sense to have mobility up there in the park and ride. And you'll see with the tier one, the mobility options, we want to pack as much as possible into the tier one mobility hubs. Because that's where we feel like that's where the most action is going to happen. Tier two is here. That would probably be most applicable to our business community. So we're looking at business parks. We're looking at community centers like the rec center and other opportunities with the healthcare system to provide these mobility hubs. They still have a lot to offer, but not as much as the tier one locations. And then we have the nobil, the neighborhood level mobility hubs, which would be still have transit access, or I should say shuttle access, but also focus on bikes as well. We've looked at different communities for inspiration from mobility hubs. I think Minneapolis has a lot of great examples as well as Columbus. So this is the Linden Library where they have scooters and Bike Share located at the library itself as well, as well as a kiosk. And then Montreal is another area of inspiration we're looking at. And then Montreal is another area of inspiration we're looking at. Ryan mentioned an AARP grant that we're going for, and we are going to apply for age-friendly street furniture as part of the first step of mobility hub at the Rec Center. We've worked with staff, and we've identified this yellow box as the mobility hub to take shape at the Rec Center. We're going to have to move the bike parking a little bit, but we're going to have this designed out to have the bike parking, hopefully a future COGO station, thinking about the age-friendly benches and street furniture as and a shelter for those waiting for the shuttle. The senior center is just to the right of this, so I think there's a lot of great location for people to use it. And those are bocce ball courts behind it that may be redeveloped anyway, so we may expand this mobility hub further, but I think it's a good starting point. So that's mobility hubs. In the interest of time, I'll just continue on. It's very short, and then we'll have any questions at the end. Wayfinding is the other area. Wayfinding is a term that we use to help people orient themselves in a community and also find direction to where they want to go for a destination. We use this, we do this by deploying maps, sometimes signs with directional information and symbols. It's also a great opportunity to highlight points of interest in our community. As you look at the regional trail network for biking and walking and running, we see that the Old Tengee Trail is in red on the right. The Seota Trail is taking shape in blue along the center of the roadway. And you'll see the dots there, those indicate that the trail is planned but not yet built. So we do have plans to continue to expand these trail systems. The green squiggly line in the middle is probably the most exciting for Dublin. That is a new trail that has been designated by the Central Ohio Greenways Board, and that provides opportunities to branch off and create what we're calling bike loops, which is a way to show off the community, but also leverage the many miles of shared use path that Dublin has that other communities do not have. When I think about, when we talk about bike loops, we're looking at themed loops that you can ride around the community. We have a few ideas. One is a recreation loop that goes from the Rec Center to Glacier Ridge Metro Park, and that's in purple. We have a public art loop that we're working on in orange that highlights a lot of the public art, whether it be the Field of Corn, which seems the most popular, but there's many other public art locations we'd like to highlight. We have an ice cream loop, which I hope is very popular with families and other individuals. We have a Celtic cocktail loop, which should not be done in one day, but through several weeks. And then we have the Irish Fairy Door Loop, which is something that the Visitor Bureau has developed, as well as the Celtic Cocktail Trail. So we are working with Visit Dublin, Ohio to help, you know, promote the city and use these bike loops as a way to do it. The Regional Trail Significance is a placeholder name. We are working on finalizing a name for that trail. It may be Emerald Trail or some other Glacier Ridge Connector Trail. We haven't narrowed it down, but that's where we're going with it. The blue stars are mobility hubs that we're proposing. And the ones in yellow are the ones that we're looking at first. So the Rec Center, the library, parking garage, and then Franz Road and Metro Place North, it's next to the Grater's Ice Cream. There is an opportunity to do a neighborhood-level bike loop that connects well to the district in a more leisurely way. So these are what we're looking for, wayfinding, and how they begin to interact with the other priorities that we're talking about. In terms of the wayfinding, we're starting with stickers that are vinyl with adhesive. They're very durable on the pavement, and we've done some tests, they hold up very well with the weather and change of seasons. We want to use these because while they are semi-permanent, they're easy to move if need be. So the thought is we have people ride these bike trails. We get feedback from them to make sure that they're the best they can be. We make adjustments where needed. And then we wanted to do a long-range wayfinding system, which is glow-in-the-dark paint and stencils in replace of the stickers. So I think this would be a cool opportunity that no other community in North America is doing. I know this is very popular in Europe and some other locations around the world. And so we thought it'd be a good idea to, one, do something different, something I think is cool. I can say that, maybe it's not cool anymore because I said that, but also something that extends the utility of these paths beyond dusk. So you can do some really interesting programming, like a glow ride, for example, which could be an interesting way to explore the city. So moving forward, we're going to continue to develop more bike loops. Some other areas that we're looking at are historical and cultural bike loops, more public art loops, entertainment-themed loops. A Halloween cemetery loop could be fun for later in the fall in partnership with the Historical Society. A pizza loop would be great as well. So if there's any ideas, recommendations, would love to hear it from the committee, the subcommittee, but this is the direction we're heading in. And then finally, just to round it off, completing smart streets, we have been leaning on Morpsy a lot for some for some sample resolutions that we could pass in support of completing smart streets. We've taken action, and we are actively working on expanding the smart streets aspect. We have a few pilots that we have going on that is looking at infrastructure improvements, and we can talk more about that, but that's the gist of it. At the end of the day, we're building an ecosystem. I think that's the biggest takeaway, and all of these five-part areas contribute to what that goal is. So that is the presentation. It was a lot of information. We'd love to entertain any questions that we have.
First, thank you, guys. And Ryan, we didn't officially meet you. Thank you so much for your time today. I have a question or two. Isa, do you have anything?
No, I'm okay. That was very helpful and extensive.
Yeah, the one thing I just wanted to ask, and I know all the planning that went into it, it just sort of stood out to me. In the DEI efforts, we've become really sensitized to the sense of segregation on either side of the river. And of course, there is no, I don't think you have a mobility hub even planned for the east side of the river. I'm just wondering if that was considered and explicitly abandoned, or what you would say to that?
We do have, there are two mobility hubs, East of the River, the Bridge Park, and at the Park and Ride, but that is the extent of it at the moment. I think we can expand it more, and that can be something interesting to look at. The only thing that I would look at for qualifying for a mobility hub is making sure that we have the transit, not the transit access, the shuttle access, and that's easy to do. For the bike loops, we want to make sure there's a safe way to get to and from, so that's something that we'll have to look at. And when I look at, if I can share my screen real quickly, I have the map up. Okay. So if you notice, with the bike loops, a lot of them go along Emerald Parkway, and that's because that's a very safe, leisurely ride. I don't feel comfortable yet, I mean, like, this is where the Dublin Art Council is, off Riverside Road. It's a great location, a beautiful building, but we don't have a shared use path built to it yet, and Riverside has very fast traffic. So I think as you begin to build out the system, other opportunities for mobility hubs will become apparent. If there's any in particular that you see, Bridgette, Isa, that we should consider, please let us know, because I think it was just, we're starting small and growing it. So I think if there's other opportunities, we definitely want to incorporate that.
Thank you. I guess that's it with that presentation?
Yes.
Thank you so much, you guys. Where's my agenda? I think that, Isa, we wanted to, let me just ask, we all have at least till 10, 10 more minutes at least? Is that true? Great. So I think, Isa, you know, one of the things we definitely wanted to do today is try to agree that we'd like to send the ideas generated related to economic empowerment to the task force. I had talked to JM yesterday, and it seems like the process is such that we don't need to officially approve anything. We just need to go ahead and agree that we'd like to move our draft ideas to the task force so that they have an opportunity to review them and give us some feedback, add or subtract, and then we might revisit them to put it into something that would eventually be approved by the full task force. I know, and we've had time to look at the ideas. We've generated them, and we've looked at them. So I'm certainly comfortable at this point, and I'm wondering if you are as well, to go ahead and share them with the task force.
Definitely. I think we're good to go.
Okay, good. So JM, I don't know exactly what that process is. I assume you'll just, you know, get an email, share a process, and make sure people can see it. Obviously, the meeting's tonight, so we don't expect anybody to see it for tonight, but it would be for the next meeting.
Yeah, and I would say if you have an opportunity tonight, just to bring that to everyone's attention, so they can expect it and hopefully be ready to read it and review it.
Great, I definitely will. And then, so the last few agenda items. Likely agenda items for next meeting, I know this is helpful if we can give city staff, you know, advance notice if there's, especially if we want to hear from anybody else outside of staff about topics. Off the top of my head, I don't have anything right now, but I think I will probably come up with some ideas. But Isa, do you have any recommendations?
I'm not sure if I would call it a recommendation as much as sort of a heads up for, you know, Colleen and Emily and everybody at the Economic Development. When you see it, you will understand that we have a lot in there that has to do with the city's economic development effort when it comes to furthering our aspirational goals around DEI. And, you know, I'll be the first one to say I know very little about the ins and outs of economic development. I certainly have been in awe of what Dublin has been able to achieve over the years, especially having grown up in Hilliard, I see the difference. But I definitely want this to be in open communication. I certainly hope that what we want to achieve as a goal or goals is in alignment with what you want to achieve. But I'm sure there are challenges that you face or you perhaps foresee with what we have proposed. And as much as possible, we want to learn about it. We want to see how things from a point of view, so that this can be as constructive as possible. But there is much that we have put in there that you feel like it's perhaps encroaching in what you do, and we want to be sensitive about that.
That's a great point. Thank you, Isa. I totally concur. And I think really, along that line, then, I think, Colleen, would it be appropriate for you guys to take a review of the draft and then either, however you're comfortable, sharing some, you know, basically informing us of what we don't know about that affects what we're recommending, and then also just giving us your insight and what might be feasible or not. I don't know if that's in memo form, or it might be more useful, you know, at our next meeting in presentation form.
Sure. You know, I saw an early draft, and I know that there's some talk of incentives. So I think it's probably a good idea to have a deeper conversation to sort of understand how incentives work and how they're paid and where the money comes from to sort of understand potential limitations that we have with, you know, just creating incentive programs that are financial. It's not to say that there are not incentive programs that we can't create that are non-financial, right? So I think my team can review the recommendation report and definitely either report back at a next meeting, or, like you said, Bridgette, we could do it by memo, but certainly. And I think, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be just our little economic development team, right? This is a citywide initiative, so I think we could offer some input where we feel that maybe it's beyond the capabilities of our, you know, team of four people, or we need to get other city departments or divisions involved, you know, potentially even taking a lead. Like, it doesn't always necessarily have to be just my team taking a lead, but we also have a lot of community partners, like you heard from Kaz this morning. So I think, you know, with a lot of the partners that we have, there could be other lead agencies when it comes to some of these recommendations. So we certainly can give you all that feedback.
Great, thank you. JM, if it's okay with you, we'll probably try to figure out a little bit more about agenda items for the next meeting and get back to you. I do think the one thing that we wanted to address, I wish Erica was here, was, Isa, we probably need to either move our monthly meeting or double up and meet every couple of weeks. Basically, Dana had pointed out that since our meetings tend to be the same day as the main task force, there's going to be a month delay in whatever we do. Like, today, we send them our economic empowerment recommendations, but they're not going to have a chance to review or put it on the agenda. But if we had met two weeks ago, it would be on today's agenda. So maybe we'll just text among the three of us and see if there's an opportunity for us to meet again in a couple of weeks so that we could get another set of draft recommendations out and to the task force.
I think to try at least to meet the deadlines and expectation of reporting, that needs to happen. Yes, I agree.
Okay, great. So we'll get back to you on that as well, JM. Is there a new business that anybody wanted to bring up? Nope. Okay, well, I'm impressed with us. We're going to end on time. And on behalf of Erica, again, I want to let everybody know she wishes she was here. And I know Isa, and I really appreciate all the time and effort. And thanks again, Ryan, for sticking with us today, and Colleen for being here as well, and Emily.
Thank you.
Yes, and shout out to Emily for organizing the meeting with Kaz, that she took all the credit.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Everyone.
See you later tonight.
Okay.